Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us. This is a call to order of the Aspen City Council regular meeting for January 9th, 2024. Could we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Councilor Dooley.
Here.
Councilor Dooley.
Here.
Councilor Hohenstein.
Councilor Rose.
Here.
Mayor Torrey.
Here as well. Tonight, we start off our meeting with some public appearances. We have some friends from far away that have joined us this evening. Before I introduce them, they are delegates from the Sister Cities Program here from Shimakap Village in Japan. We've been hosting them for over the last couple of days. Today, the city sponsored a lunch with them at the Mountain Chalet. And it's just wonderful to have them here in Aspen. For folks that don't know about the Aspen Sister Cities Program, it is primarily an exchange program, and it's an exchange of students, government, and other citizens from both of our communities. We had a student delegation that was over in Shimakap just this past year in October. Ward and I as well visited because we were celebrating our 30th anniversary of being Sister Cities with Shimakap Village. These stories and the history would take us a while to go through right now, but it is truly an honor for us to be associated with this village. They are absolutely amazing in their gifts of sharing respect and cultural lessons that we are learning from. And I encourage everybody, if you get a chance, go visit. It is a magical, magical place. I want to use this opportunity, though, to say thank you because not only when we were there, but over 30 years, they have hosted students and community members. And they take such good care of all of us, and we want to say thank you to them. I want to give, Corey, if you don't mind, can you share that with them, please? Thank you. So joining us here tonight, we have Shimakap Vice Mayor Hideyuki Matsunaga. A village council member and the vice chairperson of their council, Motori Otani. Another village council member, Sonoko Shimokawa. And we are also joined by a former mayor of Shimakap Village, Hiroshi Nakamura. Some of them have been to Aspen before. Like I said, our relationship with them goes back over 30 years. And Matsunaga-san actually was here for an environmental conference 20-something years ago. It's just an amazing relationship that we have with them. So we have some gifts of appreciation that we want to share with them, and we also want to give an opportunity for any words from them.
Do you want to do the words first?
Yeah, that'd be great. Yes, please.
Aspen City Council members, hello.
Hello, everyone.
I am... I am the deputy mayor, Mr. Matsunaga. For the last 32 years, Aspen City members have shown a great love for Shimakap Village. I would like to thank the villagers.
So he wants to thank everyone here and everyone in Aspen for a wonderful 32 years of deep friendship and support.
The 10 people who came to Aspen this time have been people who have built the history of Shimakap and Aspen. And they are going to continue to build the history of Aspen and Shimakap even further.
So he brought 10 delegates along with him to celebrate the past 30 years of history with the relationship with Aspen and to forge new friendships and continue the deep relationship with Aspen for the next 30 years.
I would like to continue to build the history of Shimakap. Thank you.
He looks forward to working with you for an indefinite time into the future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May we suggest, Mayor, that the council and delegates that work here, there will also be a photo of the group?
Okay.
Mayor Torrey. Junki has some words as well.
Junki?
Yes.
Okay.
Junki has some words as well. Should you do it now or later?
Now would be good.
Okay.
And then we'll just take a quick break. We'll exchange a couple items, and we'll take a quick photo together.
Okay, fantastic. Junki, go ahead.
Please wait, sorry. Hello, glad to see you. Happy to be here. I'm Junki Otani. I'm Shimkap Town Hall staff, and my job is public relations. Thank you so much for inviting us. We all appreciate the warm hospitality of people of Aspen. We have prepared some gifts for you. First, this is a keychain. This keychain is in shape of climbing hole, climbing hole. It was made by Kanta Ro Hasegawa. He makes accessories and climbing holes using wood. He's also a climbing instructor. He's a very important person for Shimkap. A second gift is a coaster. It was made by another person whose name is Koichi Yoshida. And he is also a wonderful woodworker. The coaster has the 30th anniversary of our Sister Cities logo printed. The last gift is a clear file of Shimkap. Inside the file is a November issue of Shimkap Village Public Paper. I mailed it. The cover of this public paper is a photo of us with the Aspen delegations. The article in this public paper describes our 30th anniversary with the city of Aspen and our short-term exchange program for junior high school students. But it is all written in Japanese. Please do your best to read it. That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, if we could have...
Do you want the wood in the middle?
Right in there, there's a way to get through right on that side.
Middle? I'll take the picture. Go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Picture through?
Hi, everyone.
Gift is still... Okay, okay.
This is not...
Shimkap Village. Here. After that, we'll give it later. Right? Picture first.
Sweep this. Come on, get close. Get in here. Don't smile, man. Everybody say "Junki".
Junki!
And a couple look in here, please. Junki! Thank you.
You don't need help. Touch it, I.
Thank you.
Thank you. From the county manager.
Thank you.
Hi. This is the last one. Hi.
Three bottles. Straighten it.
Straight.
Should I just get it?
Thank you.
Okay.
Ah, got it. Is there a ski resort in Shimkap or not?
Ah, okay. Population's only 12.51.
Torrey.
Please, Frank.
Where's Junki when you need him?
Hiroshi was also in my host family, me and his wife, myself, when I was over in Shimakap.
It's great to see him again.
And enjoy Saki with him.
Yeah. Saki. All right. Thank you again. With that, we will come to citizens' comments and petitions. It's an opportunity for citizens to address council on items that are not scheduled for a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak this evening? I'll start with in-room. And I'll look online as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more call for public comment, looking online as well. I see a hand go up and down. Mr. Scruggs, are you there? One more try? All right. We'll move on then. Yeah, the black and white looks great. That'll move us down to special orders today. Opportunity for council members' comments.
I'll start out. Happy New Year, everyone. Is it too late to say that? I don't know. Larry David would say so. I just wanted to start out by saying, in the interest of full disclosure, I started a new job this past week. I'm the Assistant Director of Housing Facilities at the Aspen School District, and I do think it's important that I let anyone who cares know that. Beyond that, as far as special requests that I have for council, I wanted to request a work session to discuss response and their request for an additional $100,000 for their Survivor Domestic Violence Shelter facilities down in Basalt. I'm hoping for the work session to be on January 22nd. I believe there are things in the works for that, if I can just get council's approval. So that is my request today.
I am supportive of that.
And the same with me. I am too. All right. We'd love to add that to the work session on the 22nd.
And I guess one more thing. David Scruggs, he didn't get to speak tonight. I'm not sure if he's listening, but I know he's still been requesting hybrid meetings for HBC. I was wondering if we can get another update on that, and I just want to show support for that again and ask if there's any concrete steps being taken towards that, if there's anything that council needs to do, whether it's a financial or a staff-related issue preventing that from happening.
Sarah, where are we with that process? We've had some issues around making that happen. I know that there's different opinions from people that are on our boards and commissions, so...
That is correct. I just got approval to schedule a work session. We are bringing in a third party. That whole night is a focus on not only board and commission operations, but also some council operations. And so we're making arrangements for a representative from our insurance company, Sursa, to come on-site regarding open meetings and open records laws. So we've put the invite out, trying to get that done in March, but we are waiting to hear back on that consultant's schedule.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other council comments? Sure? Phil?
Also, Happy New Year to everyone. Hope everyone had a nice holiday season. I don't have too many specific things. Firstly, excited for a year of, I hope, progress, and I hope relatively quick progress, at least by bureaucratic standards. I'm excited to make some changes to benefit our community. I also want to let staff know that I'm appreciative of the final push on getting people into their homes at Burlingame 3. I know a lot of hard work went into it, but that doesn't make me forget that the city of Aspen should not act as a developer. And there's a lot of lessons that should be learned from that experience and that we should leverage other opportunities moving forward. But the efforts and the hard work of the staff does not go unnoticed by me, and I'm appreciative of it. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. John?
Yeah. Climate news. As we look back on 2023, there was some good climate news at the end of the year after 20 years. More than 190 countries agreed to a major deal to protect the biodiversity of the world's oceans outside national borders after more than two decades of talks. United Nations adopted the treaty in June. Brazil deforestation fell after reaching a 15-year high because they got a new president who put an end to the massive deforestation. And American Lab has made a big development in fusion energy, which is big news for as a possible renewable or low-carbon energy future. And finally, nearly 200 nations agreed to transition away from fossil fuels at the Climate Change Conference in Dubai, known as COP28. It's explicitly recommending transitioning away from fossil fuels, such as oil, gas, and coal that are dangerously heating earth. Many acknowledge that it did not go as far as they wanted. Now that it's 2024, the bad news is 2023 was, has been acknowledged as the hottest year on record ever recorded. Published by the Copernicus Climate Change Service, a component of the European Union's Climate Change Observation Program, found that 2023 is confirmed as the warmest calendar year in global temperature data records going back to 1850. According to the report, 2023 marks the first time on record that every day within a year has exceeded 1 degree Celsius above the 1850 to 1900 pre-industrial level for that time of year, and that January of 2024 is on pace to mark a 12-month period during which temperatures exceed the 1.5-degree... the one-point-five-degree Celsius increase threshold. Scientists have warned could lead to catastrophic irreversible climate ramifications if sustained. Clearly, we still have a lot of work to do. Happy New Year.
Hey, John. Ward?
I'd just like to start off by saying what a joy it's been to have the delegates from Shimukaku here. And for those that don't know, probably most of you don't know this, but in Shimukaku, the street signs have an Aspen leaf on one side and a red maple leaf on the other. It's truly a benefit to both communities and a joy to the heart. And as we start the year, another lap around the sun. I have four hopes for 2024. Respectfully collaborate and address community concerns and how local government may mitigate them. To work together with a positive attitude to protect the community fabric. To continue to seek a balance between community values and the temptation to compromise values for profits and selfless dedication to the good of the community. Thank you all and Happy New Year.
Thanks, Ward. My comments this evening are just to say Happy New Year. I'm excited to be back in the building and I'm back to work. So I'm looking forward to it, council members. I think we're gonna have a wonderful 2024. With that, I don't see any agenda amendments, and it'll bring us to city manager's comments tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Two items for you today. First, I ask you to join me in welcoming Barb, see, my tongue twisters. Bob Narasi as interim planning director. Bob's been with us for a number of years, and he served as community development director in Eagle County for a number of years as well before joining our team. And so he'll be stepping in that role on a temporary basis as we say farewell to Amy Simon tomorrow as her last day. The other thing, I just wanted to give you an update on Burlingame Three sales. I wanted to let you know thirty-eight units have closed and keys are with those owners. Another thirty units are under contract and are scheduled to close. Most of those are happening, I would say, probably mid-February. We're in a little bit of a slowdown just because of the banks slowing down over the holidays on their underwriting. But that will pick back up to get those units filled and completed. There's one unit that is awarded in waiting contract, and then there's five units that need to go to APSHA for lottery, and that includes the units that were moved from category five down to category four. And so those units going back to lottery are category three and four units. I don't have the bedroom mix right in front of me at the moment. Obviously, some of them are three bedrooms. The five City of Aspen units are also in the process of being awarded.
That's great. Thank you for that. I ran into somebody that actually closed this past month in December, and they had nothing but great things to say, and they're excited to be in their unit, and everything is great for them. So I know that some of them are turned over, and they are very happy residents. Thank you. Board reports. Yes. John?
Okay, APSHA. We met December thirteenth. The first check for the home repair pilot program went out. That's a good start. A rightsizing has occurred. That's also something to be applauded. And our housing inventory was increased by eighty-two units because of BG three and a couple ADUs at the ABC. Had a end-of-year core meeting where we approved some new officers. Our new chairperson is Katie Schwerer, and our vice chair is actually our own Tessa Shreiner. We are moving forward with the coal-based methane capture, and John Doherty's interim executive director contract was renewed through 2024. RWAPA, we also had an end-of-season meeting December nineteenth. There was a presentation from Airborne Snow Laboratories about measuring snowpack. It's fascinating, and it allows us to know when to release water from Ruadi and when not to. We also found out that that April third dust storm last year lost us a whole month of snowpack. That's it for board reports.
Thank you. Any others?
Nope, John covered everything I would have.
Can I ask a question on APSHA?
Sure.
Could you let us know when you think you will have a decision in front of the APSHA board on financially incentivizing the rightsizing program?
We have a work session scheduled with the rest of the city council to discuss this. We want to have a unified voice from city council to bring forward to APSHA. We don't have a definite date on that yet, but we do have a definite date on the work session. And that is one of the topics that, along with some of the AMI tied to categories rental and ownership. So there are a number of issues that we want to bring forward. I particularly and John, we want the five of us to have a unified voice to bring to APSHA.
Thanks for taking lead on that. Hopefully, would like to see that soon.
Yeah, what's the date on that work session? Do you recall, Sarah?
Twenty-second of January.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
All right. That'll bring us down to our consent calendar this evening. Consent calendar for tonight is resolution number one, which is designating the public place for posting notices for public meetings. Resolution number two, construction services for the Islan Courts. Resolution number three, professional services contract for CORE. Resolution number four, construction services for the Heron Park Bathroom Installation Site Work. Resolution number seven, intergovernmental agreement to provide detoxification withdrawal management in Picken County. Resolutions number nine and ten, reappointing Brooke Peterson as muni judge and Ted Garden Schwartz as deputy municipal judge, and reappointing Ted Garden Schwartz as an administrative hearing officer. And the draft minutes of October tenth and thirtieth, November fourteenth and twenty-eighth, December fifth, twelfth, and nineteenth. Are there any items on the consent calendar that council members wish to pull for further discussion?
Number three, please. Resolution number three.
So number three?
And I have very quick questions on number one and number two.
One, two, and three then. All right. Let's start with resolution number one, designating the public place for posting notices for public meetings. Questions?
Question is that there needs to be a physical spot. And I was reading on the packet that the physical spot was gonna be on the third floor at the city clerk's office. I just know this building's not always unlocked, and I was just wondering if that notice was gonna be posted like against a window facing outside, or whether it was not always gonna be accessible because the building was unlocked and just wanted, yeah.
It's accessible during business hours, and so that is a secondary posting. The primary posting is on the city's website to meet our regulatory requirements.
And I just wanted to check, like, it doesn't need to be accessible during non-business hours? Because we.
No, it's a discretionary post. You actually don't have to do it at all.
I would agree with that. The open meetings law. We provide a place in case there are technological difficulties that would render it impossible for people to look at our website. So it doesn't have to be accessible twenty-four hours a day, but it does have, we are making it available at an identified place during business hours. So if there are any difficulties, because you do have to post twenty-four hours in advance, people can come in and see what's on the agenda if it becomes a necessity. I doubt that will ever happen, but it is our backup plan if it becomes necessary.
Okay. Good enough. That's all I really wanted to know, so thank you.
Resolution number two is the construction services for Islan Courts.
Good evening, I'm Matt Kuhn.
I'm Mike Tuntick.
My really quick question on this was, I was wondering if you could explain the value engineering process and what happened in this instance. I'm not sure if I've heard that before, but, so that'd be a good education on that.
So we received bids for the work. The bids were, when the original bids that came in were exceeding our budget, and we felt there were things that could be eliminated through that process. So we sat down with our design and engineering team with the lowest bidder and worked through a process of eliminating elements that were maybe nice-to-haves but not necessary components of the project. That effort got us to within our current budget limits and allows us to proceed without an additional spending request.
Okay. That's all. Add one more, but you can go after.
No, Mike, could you talk about what those nice-to-haves that were eliminated might have been?
Yeah, there are a couple of things that we looked at. One is, we had, there's sort of a roll, a little bit of a hill adjacent to the Islan Courts. We had built in a landscaped seating overlook that really doesn't impact play. There's still a central gathering area within the courts themselves. So that was one element that we could remove. And an element like that has ripple effects. Once you eliminate the seating, you can change the type of retaining that you do there. You can have implications with the drainage patterns and how the drainage systems are handled. So that was one element that we took out. Another one that would be less observable is we had a significant amount of trench drains, you know, tennis courts and pickleball courts. You're inherently creating as flat of a surface as possible with the absolute minimum cross slope. And so where the water drains, trench drains can collect all of that, and they're actually quite expensive way to move water. By eliminating the seating area, that opened up the possibility to replace those with area drains, and so there's some savings there. And the third area was the restroom. We had a permanent bathroom envisioned as part of this. We eliminated the bathroom for now. The area that we had envisioned the bathroom will remain, and that's something that can be phased in in the future. Again, the impact of eliminating the permanent bathroom at this stage means that the utility connections and things can also be taken off of the current effort. You know, at some point, we're looking at repaving the parking lot for the arc itself. There was a long electrical run that would have had to have occurred through the parking area that could be better timed in concurrent with another paving effort.
Thank you so much. And I certainly appreciate the notion of trying to bring this in under budget. Given that you're also sharing with us a bathroom project tonight, and we've seen how expensive that is, could you explain to me what the delta is, if possible, at least in an approximation of keeping the bathrooms versus eliminating the bathrooms?
So the bathroom building itself is, I don't have the actual numbers in front of me, but it would be between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars for the building, delivered on site. And then the utility hookups, there are different costs for water, sanitary, and electrical. I would say it's probably in the neighborhood of another four to five hundred thousand dollars.
So even more than Heron Park?
Yes, and it's primarily due to a slightly larger building and the complexity in the utility connections. At Heron Park, all of the utilities are within striking distance of the bathroom, sort of reaching out in a minimal way, the utilities can be brought to the site. Versus at Islan, they require, the sanitary and the water are not that complicated. It's really the electrical run that, sorry, it's the water run that produced some of the greatest challenges, not the electrical and sanitary.
Great. And obviously, there's a way to install those utility runs post-construction of the courts without disrupting the courts, right?
That's right. Yeah, the courts, the courts will be built with a post-tensioned concrete system that we would not want to dig under, but the utility runs can happen along the edges of those courts.
Thanks. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that was good. I appreciate all those answers. My last question is wondering if there was potential for covered courts one day at a different spot, maybe next to the golf course. Is that in anyone's sights?
You know, it's a good question. We did study it for the Islan location. But what you're getting at with the notion of looking into it at the Aspen tennis, golf and tennis facility is really where we would like to study the potential for a future integration of a covered facility. And there are several benefits of looking at it in that location. It's a little bit more accessible. It's not in a, it's not as sensitive of a visual corridor as the Islan area is. There are operational advantages there. Right now, those courts are done through a lease scenario. There's the potential to continue that scenario and have that alleviate some of the demand on the operation and management side of a facility, which would, you know, if it's something that we're running, would require additional FTEs, and so we're very cognizant of that.
I'm glad you're looking into it. I definitely support you looking into that. I think having indoor tennis open to the public or pickleball would be a huge benefit to this community. But thanks for working within your budget and taking that phased approach and getting all these things done when you can. I know everyone that plays pickleball is gonna be really excited about this.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Jen.
Resolution number three is the services contract for CORE.
Yeah, no specific questions from me, but definitely need to share my opinions. You know, I'm certainly supportive of a lot of what CORE does. I want to make sure I get the right terminology. Particularly under section one of the contract. But as I've expressed up here many, many times before and will continue to, building IQ is a terrible waste of taxpayer money, terrible use of rent funds. There is no ends to justify the means. It's a waste of resources and certainly not something I can support. And that's in section two of this contract. So I would be okay approving section one of this contract, but I will not support section two.
All right. Would you like that pulled for a separate vote?
Yes, please.
Okay. With that, no other items for discussion, so we will, I'll take a motion for resolution number three.
I would like to approve resolution number three, but only section one, not section two.
It would need a second? I don't hear a second for the motion. So would you like, would you like the opportunity to vote against this contract?
Sure.
Okay. Then I would take a motion for resolution number three as it is.
Thank you.
I move we adopt resolution three, series 2024, as presented in the packet.
I'll second.
Motion to second any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for resolution number three, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
No.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. And then I would take a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
Seconded.
Motion to second any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for the remainder of the consent calendar, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. Thank you. That'll bring us down to action items this evening. We have, our first item is 2024 council memberships. We had a work session at the end of last year. We were reviewing some of our memberships, and what we have here is some more information about COG.
May I share my screen?
Yes, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name's Darcy, and I'm here, I have a short presentation for you all on the 2024 council memberships. As Mayor Torrey said, we had a previous conversation about these memberships at a work session in December. At that work session, council requested additional information on the Northwest Colorado Council of Governments, which was attached in your information packet for this evening. And then also a list of other membership organizations that council could join. And so with this presentation, we're looking for the approval of the 2024 memberships that you all would like to be a part of. So staff looked into different municipalities to see if there are other membership organizations.
So staff looked into different municipalities to see if there are other membership organizations that we could be a part of or any that we are missing. Ultimately, we found that the city is already a member of many of these organizations. They just come out of different budgets, so they're not in the, they don't come out of the council budget. And so, for example, Downtown Colorado, Inc., and engaging local government leaders comes out of the city manager's office budget, and these memberships are organizational wide. So if council wanted to participate in these organizations, they could still do so, they just come out of different budgets. With that said, we did find a couple of organizations that council could join. The first is Colorado Smart Cities Alliance. The city is currently an allied government member of this organization, but they don't receive the same benefits as a dues-paying member. And so as an as an allied member, you basically just have said that you support their mission overall, but you don't receive the membership benefits of dues-paying members. And some of those benefits include project or procurement development, consulting and advising, in-kind discounts, grant support, and enhanced branding. Next, we have the elective leaders collective. This organization provides mental fitness coaching for elected officials and public servants, and it should be noted that this was co-founded by previous Aspen City Council member, Skippy Mezaro. Here we have in this table are the 2023 membership expenses and the estimated 2024 membership expenses. Invoices have been received for the Colorado Municipal League, the Northwest Colorado Council of Governments, and Club 20, as well as the National League of Cities. The invoice for the National League of Cities was paid in November, so council could decide to not continue that membership for 2025, but the membership has already been paid for 2024. But the invoices for the I-70 corridor coalition and CAS have not been received yet, so those are, that's why it's an estimated for those expenses, because we don't have expenses for 2024 for some of those organizations. Oh, and lastly, the Northwest Colorado Council of Governments recently requested that the city appoint a representative to the organization. So if council decides to continue that membership, we'll need to appoint somebody. Last April, you all passed a resolution appointing council members John Doyle and Sam Rose as the representatives, so we also want to know if you'd like to keep those representatives as is if you move forward with this membership. In fact, that's all I have, so do you guys have any questions?
Questions? Yep, Bill?
Happy to start. Firstly, Darcy, thank you for all this information, really helpful. Get the easy stuff out of the way, I'm not supportive of the Smart Cities Alliance or the ELC, but thank you for bringing those options to our attention. Northwest Colorado Council of Governments. One question of mine that I don't think was clearly answered, or maybe I'm forgetting it, apologies if so, is if we are not a member of them, how do people get elevator inspections?
I had to check if he knew details, and he doesn't yet. So at this point, we're not sure how that would happen, because all the members belong and use this service, so it would either be us setting up our own and bringing in that expertise, or us having a contract with a third party most likely out of the Denver metro area to come in and do that work. But I apologize if we missed that in our in our follow-up.
I'm not positive that's the only option, because there was something in the memo from John Stavney that, to me, was an implication that because we are a member, each local elevator owner has a discounted rate. Doesn't mean, doesn't imply to me that they won't service us. So, you know, what I'm getting at is, I don't know if you all looked at the dues analysis that was very helpful, but the city of Aspen is assessed the highest fees of any municipality in this system. Let me say that again. The city of Aspen is assessed the highest dues for any municipality in the system of Northwest Colorado Council of Governments by a significant margin. The reason why we're assessed such great dues is because their dues are based, for some reason, on the assessed valuation of residential property in the district. That's ludicrous to me. You know, for example, Eagle, their total dues for 2024 are going to be $7,000 a year. Gypsoms will be $8,500 a year. Ours are supposed to be $33,000 a year. I don't understand how we're getting significantly more value out of this organization than those communities are. I think that this is a completely preposterous way to assess fees, and I take a real issue with it, because I think it takes advantage of of places that have strong real estate markets. Makes no sense to me.
Question. Or I guess there's probably more elevators in Aspen, Picken County than in Gypsum now.
I have no idea.
Just a thought.
I attended one of these council NWCOG meetings where that issue of elevator inspections was discussed, and what what I got from that meeting was that if we weren't a member of NWCOG, we couldn't get somebody up here, that people just weren't interested in coming up to do the elevator inspections. So that's that's a data point I have on it.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question. I don't know the answer. You know, is there someone who's obligated obligated to provide that service on a state level? I really don't know.
Well, they're obligated if you're a member of NWCOG.
But is there an alternative? I think, to me, that's the critical service, because I don't think we're getting much value, and if anyone feels differently, please feel free to voice your opinion, but you know, the other services that they provide, maybe other than this Project Thor, are fairly irrelevant to me. So, you know, if this was a, if the dues for this were equivalent to similar-sized communities, I wouldn't have such an issue with it, but I feel like this is taking advantage of Aspen and Vale for that matter, and I have, I take issue with that.
I would say, Bill, that if we are a member, we can, we can work towards changing that dues structure.
Well, again, to me, the only thing that we need from them purportedly is the elevator inspections, but if we don't actually need the elevator inspections from them, I don't see any value in being a member of them, period, so.
I know of two studies that they have produced that I think are of great value, the mountain, what was it, a couple of years ago about mountain migration?
Mm-hmm.
And the other one was about a housing, workforce housing that was just released in the last month and a half, that are really extensive, dive in at not just Aspen certainly, but all of the western Colorado mountain towns and resort towns. Those I think are valuable.
Well, we're talking about a year here, so you know, there's the opportunity to re-up and have these discussions. We can talk to John Stavney about the dues that Aspen is contributing to the Northwest COG. We can look into other opportunities for elevator inspections. In my conversations with Kate, she let me know that, you know, they they also are a participant in some enforcement issues around elevators, so so there is a little bit more service than just the inspections from this, but you know, we have the opportunity to, you know, have those conversations and see if there's changes that can be made towards our dues. I guess what I'm hearing from you is, if it wasn't, if we weren't the highest-priced one, and it wasn't this cost, you'd be supportive of it, you're really just saying, are we getting the value for our membership? So we can, not knowing that we have other opportunities or alternatives at this time, we can move forward with this for the year, and we can have those conversations with John Stavney at Northwest COG and figure out if 2025, we continue this relationship.
But I would like a definitive answer, regardless of what the majority would like to do here. I mean, for me, I would not support renewing that at the moment until those questions are addressed. If the rest of you want to renew it in the meantime and address that, I would still like to know what are, what are the alternatives for elevator inspections definitively? Thanks.
Sure, if the council wants us to follow up, we'll ask that question. Part of the reason we don't have a great answer for you is because this elevator inspection program has been around for decades, because there was not the ability to get third parties to come out here to the western slope to provide these services, but it warrants taking a look at, since it's been a long time since the program was initially established.
All right, we'll come back to it in just a minute. Let's talk about some other items. Are there any others? I did make the call, I told council members that I would call Margaret Bose, who is the director for I-70 corridor coalition. You know, to be quite honest, after the conversation with her, that is a membership that we could drop from our portfolio. Glenwood Springs is a member of the I-70 corridor coalition, and they are an active participant. We definitely have a voice through them on that, so if that is something that council members would like to eliminate, I think that that is okay. We will not be missing much conversation there.
Yeah, I would support dropping that membership, and I'd like to have a discussion about the the Club 20, if there's going to be anybody that's even going to represent our community at Club 20. It's only $500, but if there's nobody that has a voice for our community there.
I actually like what I read about both I-70 corridor coalition and Club 20, and, you know, unless their missions and their their viewpoints change significantly, I don't mind being a member of it and contributing to their cause and what they're advocating for, even if we don't actively participate. I-70 corridor particularly is something that, yeah, we don't live on I-70, but we all travel on it all the time, and the things that they claim to be working on are things that do affect our commute that has very little alternative other than air travel. So I'm supportive of continuing to be a member of that and paying attention to what their mission is. Yep.
Okay. Sam, any input?
Yeah, I was just supportive of the status quo until the elevator inspection question can get answered. I just thought these are the ones that I would support and not any additional ones. That's how I feel.
Okay.
That's where I am as well.
You'd like to maintain memberships that are on the screen in front of you? You're not interested in the additionals at this time?
Exactly.
And would you like to move forward with, and Sam, this is a question for you as well, what did you just say about Northwest COG? Do you want to approve that now and get information and work over this?
Elevator issue? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that'd be a great question to get answered, just in case, but I don't feel any need to do something now.
Okay.
I think the Colorado Smart Cities Alliance for 999 might be worthwhile, and if Bill's going to participate in Club 20 and I-70 corridor, I would support that, although I have reservations about both of those.
Okay. Is there any other support for the smart cities? Not hearing any. All right, so then what we want to do for our memberships is we want to move forward with what you have in front of us on the screen. We will maintain the I-70 corridor coalition and Club 20, and we will re-up with Northwest Colorado Council of Governments while we get some more information back.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, because we are in a regular meeting, can we just have a motion from the floor to adopt these? And then, secondly, whether confirmation about if it's the same representatives to Northwest COG to assist in some of that that conversation with them, or if the council wishes to change its appointees to Northwest COG. And the reason is Northwest COG is asking us.
Okay. And you said John is currently Northwest COG rep, and Sam is alternate?
Yes.
Do you care to maintain that position, John?
If no one else is wanting to step in with the position, I'd be happy to take it on.
John, I could, I could do the NWCOG. Sam, are you still interested in NWCOG?
I don't mind being an alternate. It's the, it was more back then, it was the fact of whether I could make the meetings, because they were described to me as like an all-day thing on Thursday, and then we got more information, found out they were a Zoom meeting like a couple hours on a Thursday. So if I can make them, I'm happy to join them. If I can't, no, so alternate is fine.
John, you have a lot on your plate. I'd be happy to take that one off if that works for you.
That does work for me. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion then to approve the membership expenses as displayed. Going through them, that's CML, Colorado Association of Ski Towns, National League of Cities, Northwest Colorado Council of Governments, Club 20, and the I-70 corridor coalition. In this motion, I would also include that Ward Howenstein become our representative for Northwest COG. I would need a second.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Can we have a roll call vote for the motion, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
No.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darcy.
That will bring us to resolution number five. This is the mill levy adoption.
Morning, council and mayor. Pete Stricker, Finance Director for the city. Is it okay if I share my screen?
Please.
Thank you very much. So thanks for having me tonight. This is a timely discussion because of the impacts of special bill 001 that was adopted through a special session just recently with the state legislature. Essentially, that special bill moved some of the adoption dates and certification of mill levies. Typically, we do a mill levy certification by December 15th of the prior year. Currently, we are at January 9th, and we need to certify by January 10th. So with that, we had our earlier work session meeting with council back on December 11th. We walked through a lot of the mechanics of a mill levy calculation, and I'm just here to present to you kind of the final shakeout of the numbers and try to decide where the council wants to head. Obviously, it's important to remember that there are a lot of different entities that kind of make up somebody's total taxing bill. We have a lot of overlapping jurisdictions that have taxing authority, and there's a lot of different things that can play into how many levy or how many mills each taxing entity can charge. So there's a lot of them that are subject to the statutory 5.5% growth limit. There are others like ourselves that have some Tabor restrictions. Some others have their debt service tied to, their mill levies tied to their debt service needs, and so it has to fluctuate based on that. I can tell you that our portion of somebody's property tax bill typically in the city of Aspen is about 14%, 13% to 14%. Based on the numbers I'm seeing through the papers and reaching out to the county and some other folks, I'm anticipating that we're still going to be right in that ballpark pending on what happens today. At the last meeting, I did hear that there was full support from the council to apply the most we can for the stormwater program because of the capital infrastructure needs there, and I heard that there may be a potential to reduce maybe the general purpose levy, so I took that guidance as I went forward. As you can see on the screen here, we do have kind of a status quo option, which is the requirement to apply the Tabor limit to our general purpose levy. And so if we did that, if we have to do that essentially, that will apply a 2.202 credit to our maximum mill levy of 5.41 mills for the general purpose levy. So that really reduces the amount of taxation that can happen under the general purpose levy just due to Tabor. I can tell you that the assessed values came in within, I think, $100,000 of what my other estimate was, so it was pretty darn close when we talked the last month. So you can see on the the bottom right-hand side of the screen, currently with applying the Tabor limitation, the total total amount of revenue that we would collect would be about $11.5 million. Again, the majority of that coming from the general purpose levy. The stormwater levy is a lot smaller, but again, unrestricted. So I'm just trying to put that a little bit into context of what a residential bill might go up by. It really depends on what is the assessed value of each individual property moving by, and that is very diverse. You know, a, as we talked about before, a deed restricted affordable housing unit that has an appreciation cap on it is only going to move a couple of percentage points of increase, so they are going to actually see a decrease in their property tax. So they are going to actually see a decrease in their property tax bill from the city of Aspen regardless um because the mills have to be reduced by so much. But you can see the highlighted number there was really what the average across the entire city um in terms of assessed values, that is what the growth was. So if everybody moved by the average, um, they would see roughly a ten percent increase in their property tax bill after applying the Tabor limitation. So you should note that um Aspen is subject to Tabor. Obviously, the city could have totally decoupled from Tabor restrictions a long time ago. Uh, when Tabor was first adopted, it chose not to. But if it hadn't, which a lot of communities have decoupled from Tabor, and they charge their full levies or voluntarily reduce them if they desire. But if the city actually was able to apply its full levy, uh, we would actually be collecting about sixteen million dollars under the general purpose levy. So because of Tabor, we're removing six and a half million off the bat, you know, from our total mills that would actually be subject under the full levy. So that is one important thing. Uh, the other thing is is that the budget was adopted um in late November. Um, and we had to put in assumptions for what the collections would look like. Um, so you can see on the chart, the first column shows what we included in the budget. Um, we had some growth rates. Um, I think it was roughly around five, five and a half percent growth um from last year to the the twenty twenty-four year. Um, and that's what produced the ten and a half million dollars roughly that was in the budget across all these three different um funds. Uh, with that, however, obviously, the general fund and the AMP are subject to Tabor, so they're really ratcheted down versus the stormwater levy has no restrictions at this point. So as the uh assessed values grew substantially higher than uh the five percent that we included in the budget, you can see the difference in this column. It shows that it will capture more revenue under the current status quo option. Um, again, that money is something that this council knows is is a need for the infrastructure that is um kind of sought after by the community and to keep our um water moving smoothly. Oops, there we go. And that kind of thing. Um, I know the council did ask me, what are the impacts if we do adopt the uh full general purpose levy that's allowable under Tabor? Um, is there really a need for that? Um, I did try to highlight that there are some really big-ticket items that are out there that the council's been talking about. The Armory is the largest by far. Um, we have had a lot of conversations about the walking walls and their upgrade over the last number of years. And you recently heard about a power, the old powerhouse and how the costs are going up a bit on that project as well and some other items that are listed below that. So um there is certainly a need from a capital side. And certainly, that general purpose levy is split between operations and capital. There's, under the council's purview, you could shift more to the capital side if you decided to keep the additional revenue.
Pete, could you explain the last bullet point on that slide?
Um, so this is again saying, if you desire to um not collect the full levy, um, that's allowable under Tabor in order to make it match what the budget had, you'd basically be adopting an additional temporary mill levy credit of one, or point one four one mills. Um, and I can tell you that um in doing some math recently, uh, that one council member encouraged me to do, uh, that this is roughly reducing what Tabor allows by fifty percent essentially. So it's a bit of a uh halfway between what you could collect under Tabor and um what this would produce essentially.
So so the second bullet point is a reference to option B?
Correct. This will be the the option B, which is not the status quo.
Thanks.
So if we did this additional, if we, if you all did this additional reduction, um, it would basically reduce the general fund and the the asset management plan funds collections to match what's in the budget. It would eliminate about um a little less than five hundred thousand dollars out of the budget or out of the collections, excuse me. Um, last point of reference to give you. So if if that uh option is not desirable, but to kind of give you some context to what would happen if you made any other adjustments, um, I can tell you that for every one million dollars in actual residential property value, um, a change um of the magnitude that we're just talking about, this point one four one mills adjustment is only a ten dollar reduction on a property tax bill. So if you had a exactly a one million dollar property, you would see ten dollars less on your property tax bill if you go with the option B versus if you go with the status quo. And obviously, you can multiply that based on any number of millions of dollars for any home. So the question to the council is, are option A or option B uh something that the council can support? Or do we need to uh vet out an option C? Uh, your packet does include both option, resolutions for both options A and option B already so that we can move forward rapidly. Um, if option C was um elected, we'd probably need a slight bit of time to work through that tonight and then bring that back to the council for the final wording.
Thanks. Any questions?
I think the only question before my thoughts is, on this slide, Pete, it seems to imply to me that the delta in dollars between option A and option B is only four hundred thousand dollars.
It's roughly four hundred.
Is that correct?
Yep.
So Bill, I guess the the question is, is uh four hundred thousand dollars worth? Is it worth it to to the community to save the four hundred thousand dollars where we do have definite needs? But are the um, what are the optics on it? And what what does it make sense to go with status quo? Or do you want to um have the the mill levy credit and forego the four hundred K?
My strong preference, and I think the responsible thing to do is is pursue option B, which, to clarify something Pete mentioned earlier, is basically the midpoint between what last year's city of Aspen real estate property taxes generated and what the maximum amount of dollars generated under Tabor limits could be in twenty twenty-four for twenty twenty-three taxes. And and option B, even though Pete used slightly different methodology to get there, is roughly halfway. So I think that that meets our budgetary needs that have been approved and established by this council. Uh, it doesn't exceed those budgetary needs. Um, I, to me, that feels like the right thing to do, so I'm a strong proponent of option B.
And and you're supportive of um collecting all for the stormwater fund?
I am, given the the projected needs for those capital improvements. I think this is a unique opportunity um to help fund some of that shortfall.
I, you know, I I'm, we have a lot of projects coming up. I also am thinking about that, you know, over the last two weeks, we had some infrastructure struggles in our uh ability to provide electricity. Um, and I I, you know, I think that our community, it's such a small change to an individual, and yet four hundred thousand dollars going forward for uh the armory infrastructure needs that we have. I, you know, I'm I'm a little bit more in option A, status quo. I don't think that um, you know, I I appreciate kind of the desire to lower taxation, but the the delta and the difference here per individual is so minimal. And yet, we have a lot of community needs that we've identified. So I I would like to just advocate a little bit and speak on behalf of option A. You know, again, I I I'm trying to, trying trying to be a representative of the community. And I think what we've heard from our community is that they recognize that we have some needs um that are greater than saving somebody ten or twenty dollars. So I'd love to have some conversation around that. Sam?
Um, I appreciate that. I I would go with option B just because we are one of many entities. So that ten dollars is just on top of potentially other entities. And I do think it's important to provide tax relief um because I'm not necessarily thinking of billionaires that are providing tax relief to. But there's also people in this community um that have owned their homes for a really long time. And uh having their tax bill goes up is a bigger effect to them, especially those on fixed incomes. And this might be wishful thinking, but this is just the way my brain works sometimes is, you know, if you spend less on taxes, maybe you spend more on something else. And maybe that helps increase our sales tax dollars for the year because you have more money in your pocket and less going towards the government. It's really a small amount, but that's my wishful thinking of, you know, four hundred thousand dollars one way and then hopefully getting a greater sales tax revenue from it the other way, providing some relief, getting the budget that we need. Um, and uh maybe next year, when we come back to this, we increase it because we do need those budgetary needs. Um, but I totally respect what you have to say about like the dire needs that we have. But I just would like to think that um providing relief is important to people that um, especially on fixed incomes, and that maybe them having the ability to spend their dollars elsewhere might actually be a benefit to our community as well.
Another way to find that approximately four hundred thousand for some of those capital and infrastructure projects, which almost every member of the community would say is a wise use of the money, would be to stop squandering money on things like building IQ aspirational projects that provide no tangible goal, no tangible results, I'm sorry. That's food for thought when you're considering how we're spending the community's money.
Yeah, and I disagree with you on your on your opinion on building IQ, but um I appreciate that. Guys, where are you? What what are we thinking?
I'm I'm split on this because I think I I definitely know that there is a need for uh these capital projects, the AMP fund, general fund. Um, and the difference, uh philosophically, I can agree with uh with Sam and Bill that it it makes sense not to increase if we uh don't have to. But I think we have to, and it's like lunch. I mean, it's one lunch in Aspen is what the difference is in the, in this amount that will make up. And I I'm a property taxpayer here and um although I, I agree with, I don't agree with the uh building IQ, and I think that comes out of a different dedicated fund. So I don't, I don't see mixing that up with this discussion as beneficial. So I would um, although it's a, it's a flip of the coin, I would go with option A because I think we just need those those funds.
I too favor option A. Uh, the arguments presented tonight are, you know, they're all valid. But I do think that the the amount we're talking about is small. As Ward says, uh, the savings would buy you a nice lunch. Um, and we're all talking about getting the Armory going. This is where the rubber meets the road. We need money to to fund these projects that the community is asking us for. Go with option A for me.
Uh, thank you. Um, you know, after hearing that discussion, I I continue to see myself in black and white on this. And um, and I am, I I, you know, I can be supportive. Uh, uh, again, either one is really, this is not a big question. But uh, you know, again, for for what I hear from community members, the impacts that we're trying to bring to our community are ne- necessary. And this is a way to fund them. I I I I could support uh option A. So, um.
Governor, I'd like to move that we adopt resolution five, series twenty twenty-four as the status quo option or presented as option A on the presentation this evening.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Yeah, you know, uh, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I would say there's enough in um council member Hohen's, Hohenstein's motion. But I do want to just clarify, the mill levy that you would be passing would be three point eight five eight total. So without the additional temporary reduction, the mill levy you would be approving and certifying to the ass, to the assessor's office would be three point eight five eight or to the treasurer's office, I'm sorry.
The combination of both mill levies, yes.
That's the total. So I, just for the record. Thank you.
Okay. Ward, can you just, for the record, agree that that is your motion?
Three point eight five eight is the mill levy that I'm.
For the two mill levies.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, uh, further discussion? Um, you know, once again, I I I'm going to support this. This is, this is for community need. Uh, what I've heard from my constituents is that uh they have a lot of expectations. And um, you know, like I said, we just recently had an incident that um we do not want to see happen on a regular basis. And this is, that's where these funds are are going to be best utilized. Um, the savings per individual, I don't think um outweigh the benefit to the greater good here. So uh I will be supportive.
Well, to to be clear, we're sorry to correct you here, but the money for this will not go towards electrical infrastructure upgrades. That is an enterprise fund and and.
Understood, understood. But it is, it is able to do infrastructure projects. So whether it's our roads, for example, the half a million dollars or uh more that we had to go to C dot with in order to get Main Street paved and and that kind of work. So I I think that there are infrastructure needs that this will go to, so. But I appreciate what your your clarification.
To follow up on Bill's question, is um, is the uh enterprise fund the only fund source of uh infrastructure for electrical um improvements?
Yes, other than the council did recently um authorize some community um enhancement, what do they call, community enhancement funds from Holy Cross, which are held in our general fund, to underground some uh power lines in a neighboring uh neighborhood.
Mountain Valley.
So there are some uses outside of the enterprise fund.
Bill, thanks for that clarification.
Could we have a roll call vote for the motion, which is for resolution number five?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
No.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
No.
Mayor Torrey?
I'm a yes. Thank you.
If you could work with Nicole to get a signature?
Sign that?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That'll bring us to resolution number six. This is the growth management allotment carry forward.
Hello, Amy Simon, Planning Director. Thank you for um reviewing this request tonight. This is something that the planning department does annually. We come to city council to talk about our growth management allotment system and how we're managing it. So the land use code has um an allotment established for several different types of development, free market residential, commercial, affordable housing, lodging, and so on. And part of the planning department's job is to keep track every year to make sure that we don't exceed the established limits, which represent a two percent annual growth that the community has determined is the most that would be appropriate. Um, as we say to you every year when we come here, we aren't coming close to using up the allotments. We're well below the two percent cap, which is good, that's success. Except um there seems to be a feeling that there is a lot of um development and change in the community, and perhaps we're not tracking it in the right method. So I'm here to tell you tonight that we have used very little of the twenty twenty-three allotments. And I'm recommending you not roll any of the balance forward into uh the twenty twenty-four system. We don't need them. I'm here to also repeat that we understand the growth management system may need some revisions. In the packet, we've included some previous direction you have given, some of which has already been implemented. Um, for instance, looking at the demolition allotment system. Um, and we will be back to talk to you again later in the year about additional changes because of the House bill, um, which restricts efforts to limit development, particularly in residential sectors. So in your packet, um, there is a chart telling you exactly what was consumed last year. Um, all of the um single-family or duplex demo allotments were used. Um, very little of the commercial square footage allotment, twenty-five hundred square feet of a possible thirty-three thousand. Um, there were no lodge pillows developed or no lodge pillows proposed. Um, no free market residential allotments that count as growth, um, which I can explain if you have questions about that. No essential public facility proposed in the last year. So staff recommendation is, again, that you not roll forward any of what was not used in twenty twenty-three.
Questions, Bill?
Thanks, Amy. And all the best to you.
Thank you.
On your last day of work of many, many years in Aspen. Thanks for all, your service. Thanks for all your service. Two questions. One, could we carry forward certain allotments and not all?
Yes, you could decide, it's up to you exactly how you want to use any of the amount that wasn't consumed in 2023, whether you carry forward some, all, none.
Thanks. And then could you explain, give an example of when a free market residential unit would use an allotment?
Yes. So when someone has an established, recognized townsite lot that has a house on it, or perhaps a house is being demolished and replaced, that's not viewed as growth. That's expected development. When someone does a subdivision and they create development that we weren't anticipating, that's growth, and that comes out of the 13-unit cap each year. We really don't see that occurring very much. So that's, you know, something I think is an example of us saying, oh, look, we're staying within our growth limits, we're succeeding, yet we see a lot of construction in the residential sector, and that feels like growth, and maybe we're just not using the right tools. That's, that's for council to discuss in the future, whether this is an effective way to reach the community's goals or not.
Great. Well, I disagree with you that construction is growth and replacement is growth, but that's okay. What about a vacant lot that has never, a platted city lot that has never had a house constructed on it, that then has a house constructed on it? Does that use a residential allotment?
No, again, if it's, you know, a, not the product of a subdivision, it has an established allotment right, a development right, and we don't typically count that. Even if someone chooses to do a duplex rather than a single-family home, that still doesn't count as using an allotment. Each property is, has a buy right development.
Great, and the same logic would apply, let's say, if you took down a six-unit residential complex and replaced it with a 12-unit residential complex if, if the zoning permitted such?
Yes.
Great, thanks. Well, I'm, I think that at the very lea, well, not at the very least, I think the only thing that warrants carrying forward is the two 35-plus-year local demo allotments that went unused last year in light of the issues that, and the pain that we've experienced or we've witnessed from some of our longtime locals in that regard. Thanks, thanks for answering all my questions, Amy.
Yeah, Bill, I had that in my notes as well, is that, that is subject to council approval for the 35-year or two. I support carrying that forward. None of the rest.
I support carrying the 35-year allotments forward too, with the hope that we can reduce the threshold of 35 years significantly, but yeah, at least there's consensus there.
Sounds great. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number six, series of 2024, GMQS rollover with an amendment that the 30, the two 35-plus-year demo allotments that went unused in 2023 will be rolled forward to 2024.
I'll second.
So motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. Thank you so much. Nice to see you on your last evening.
Thank you, Amy.
All the best, Amy, thanks.
Safe travels.
Counsel, before we adjourn, I need to look over at Sarah. Sarah, I forgot in my comments to bring up the opportunity for looking at grant funding for the powerhouse electrification.
Yeah, we have staff responsible for doing that. One of the things that's always important, so I don't think you meant just electrification, but I think you meant the MEP upgrades, because it will, can still be electric without the full MEP upgrades. The, we're aware of it. We watch those dollars, particularly in the Climate Action Office, to support those opportunities. And I, right now, I don't know which grant criteria are open at the moment, but we'll continue to monitor, and if it looks like one's a match, pursue it. That's my understanding from all of you was, the direction I received was to go ahead and still pursue capital dollars for a fully electric enhanced MEP on the building, and that, that direction was to go forward without having the operating cost analysis. So pursue grant funds without the operating cost information.
Great, thank you. With that.
I'd like to move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for adjournment, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. Bill, do you have a couple of seconds?
Sure.